Sign in and pick up your next agenda.
Yes.
So what?
Oh, okay.
Hello.
Hi. Cool.
Are you going to be able to address this? Jay.
All kind of see.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah. God, when this place was.
Yeah, like having it.
Yes. I don't.
Thirty-one.
I don't know. I will, I listen to him.
Paul Turner.
At noon.
Yeah.
Every day.
Thirty-one.
Okay, he asked him.
Another course only made it into the mainstream option.
Yeah, there's some.
It's just fun.
Yeah, yeah, but the guy asked for his death yesterday. I mean, do you hate somebody that much?
I know, I just say.
How, how does a person hate somebody that much to actually murder someone?
I say, I say.
Oh, I pray to say.
I know.
But how do you go? You got the job.
I say it. It's crazy to.
I have a lot of common sense. I know God's got a plan. But we understand it now.
Yeah. That's true. That is true. So his plan was to take.
Yep. Whether it be a marker, whether it be a.
Oh, I think he wasn't.
Whether it be a.
I'm hoping somebody picks up a van.
That's what I mean. So let's see.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really interesting. Because I hated the. I wanted to eat.
The, uh.
Rush. Good? This?
Uh.
Is that about saying this time?
No.
You want to turn around?
Yeah.
No.
That didn't go through? I know it's, I don't order them because they just don't know if I'm.
Yeah.
Well, there's so much that's not going to work. Rush dog moves and stone.
There you go.
Just lay off science.
I'll tell you what, I thought we were dead set in the winters.
Oh, yeah. That was up in the four hours north of Sioux.
I was.
You guys got cold down here.
Yeah, it was brutal there. Was it?
We had frost.
I was gonna say did it snow.
Just waiting for it, we had frost.
Did you catch it?
Did you just go fish for it?
Whereabouts?
Um, hour and a half north of Lawa.
Oh.
It's way up there.
Way, way up. Oh, okay. Oh, my goodness.
Gotcha.
You had from, you had by heat.
We had frost on the boat.
It's so sparse up there. It's so sparse up there. Holy smokes. I mean, if it gets sick, where do you go? Trail or city?
Four years ago, man.
Oh, I was.
But wasn't good?
Pretty good.
Was it? What'd you guys catch?
We were doing waterfalls.
Oh, really?
One of my best.
That's cool.
You know, he gave me.
Oh, really?
It's beautiful.
It's very cool. Yeah, there's a lot of same button down there.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
You're brought out. No games, you know?
That was perfect.
No, nobody's putting any toys. It's nothing.
Yeah, that's cool.
You want to find that place? I was going to ask my own assignment, but I won't. Do you understand why? Yeah, sure.
Not when you just keep them like this.
Uh, we, we love people.
Yeah, they say it's all.
Yeah, uh, we just got bigger ones. But we can catch usually.
Yeah. Yeah. I've never had.
Yeah, no.
How big was the ones you were catching?
Uh. Yeah, they were like seventy pounds.
Wow.
Yeah, I never measured one with seven and a half pounds.
Right?
Yeah.
George, you have a plan to.
I don't know. If you're gonna be here tonight or not.
Is Joe here?
Yeah. I'm Joe here.
Yeah, Joe's in the.
Oh, okay.
The sheriff's office.
Okay, yeah.
How's Mr. Mashburn, good?
You're here. Crushing their coal.
Actually, I was just happy to be here because I had, I had a knee nerve attack after the.
Now you feel better?
I'm still sleeping on the couch.
Are you?
Yeah.
Well, that's just because you and Leo are fucking.
No. No, he keeps saying, I'm gonna move a little bit. And then I said, no, because it's too spongy.
Yeah.
And I gotta help something hard.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, you had to take your mask off.
I'm glad you have a mask.
I've got a sitter. So I want to go see the girls.
Hello.
I brought you one.
I know.
I'm standing there and it's a ski app, so then.
I sure do. Yep, in my back.
This guy got mad because I told him to side over. And like all the rope. But I hit the bottom rope right there. I'm proud. Oh, yeah, I planned to brought this. Yeah, but we could add this to the. We could add this to the.
No, I can add, what, add up?
He borrowed your. Why? I knew that one. That's so incorrect. Yeah. I don't, I believe that. Correct. Hurry up.
It's just a quick discussion.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Quite funny. Yeah.
Okay, you wanna call a meeting order? You go stand for the way you can be.
Ladies and gentlemen, flag of the United States of America. And the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome everyone to the night. Uh, let's have a roll call.
Roll call. Dan Miller.
Here.
Tom Wise.
Here.
Andrew Darian.
Present.
Phil Bellinger.
Here.
Nick Holden.
Here.
Lance School.
Present.
George Nash.
Present.
Okay, we need a motion for approval of the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda for Sep- September tenth, twenty twenty-five, with the addition of this signage discussion. Before, uh, a new, probably a new sign for Menomora as presented. And I'll put it under new business.
What, this handout we just got?
Yes. Uh-huh. So put it for B. Under new business.
We go see.
Okay, same.
Vote your name. Somebody second?
Nothing.
All favor?
I.
Any vote? Okay, approval of the minutes for April ninth of twenty twenty-five.
I'll make. I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission meeting dated April ninth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second. All approved.
I.
Vote. Okay. Move right on to public comments for items not on the schedule but on the agenda.
Rich McCaskey.
Pardon me?
Rich McCaskey. M E I K O S K I.
And Christian McCaskey.
What would you like to talk about?
Um, we, um.
We've lived on American place for forty-plus years.
Excuse me, what is your address, please?
Oh, one three four three Circle Drive. Field back twelve.
Recently, uh, we've had a couple of neighbors that are, that, um, have chickens. Uh, but they also have, we are in a subdivision and we're house upon house upon house. One of the neighbors has a rooster and the other neighbor has three roosters. We don't have a problem with the chickens, but the roosters are constantly crowing. And they're, they're right on our lot line. And we can't even go get down and sit on the lake a- at our picnic table without them constantly crowing. And it's very distracting. We can't find anywhere where there's regulations in Menomora on how many chickens you can have or if you're even allowed to have roosters. Um, but, uh, we don't have a problem with the chickens. It's the roosters we have the problem with. I mean, we live on a lake and you know what, how, how sound carries on a lake. And it's just very, um, very annoying. It's very distracting. You'd like to go sit down on your lake, on your property, you know, and enjoy the, you know, enjoy the scenery. And then you got roosters constantly crowing next to you. The neighbor next to us has, their, their pennant is five foot from the water. They've never cleaned it. And when it's, there's a heavy rain, I don't know where, I don't know where all the, the chicken droppings are going. You know, and you can smell it when the wind blows across our lake. Um. At this point, we don't know where, we don't know where to go. We don't know what to do because I don't know who has any regulations on the chickens in a subdivision. You know, acreage I can see for roosters, farms, you know, things like that. But when you're in a subdivision where you're house on house upon house, somebody have three roosters and another one have a rooster and they're constantly crowing to each other and it's, you know, I don't know what to do.
Anyone else have a? I'll get it.
Yeah. Yeah. I would just do all day long, listen to Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's even louder when he's saying it. Joe, what do you got?
Hey, you're gonna have to come into my office and file a complaint. And then, uh, the township will send me out there to investigate it. And I've had this situation in a different community. And so I have some background on it because there's a Michigan Right to Farm Act. And the Right to Farm Act is gonna allow, uh, people to have chickens and roosters. Uh, but there are restrictions on it. So make that complaint.
And like I said, I don't have a problem with the chickens. It's the roosters that are very distracting.
Right.
Um, but, you know, I don't know what the regulations in the subdivision are.
What do they sound like? I think you know, Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, make that complaint now.
And we never had, we've never had this problem before up until about a year ago. Uh, three neighbors decided to get chickens, you know. This neighbor next to us has.
Form a complaint, not even.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah.
Public comment?
Karen Prashenko, still village of Menomora. So, uh, you know, four months without a meeting, you guys had work to do. Kind of surprised me. Um, has it been over eighteen months since you took up the sign ordinance and started reviewing that sign ordinance? And it's still not done. You didn't come today, who knows? Or the next few months. Um, you know, at the beginning of the year, Ian talked about doing a master plan review. No master plan review, you guys had four months, could've gotten together, could've talked about stuff. Um, so I find that interesting. But I wanna talk again about this board. You have a very important responsibility in our community. You have a legal responsibility in our community. Every one of you should take that serious and I think most of you do. But your conduct in public matters. And the choices that you make that affect us in the public matter. So use ethos, use credibility when we have a member repeatedly dragging a golf cart at night on a blood road. Um, also driving the village U T V on a cell phone, even though we all know that it's been well publicized it's not legal in the state of Michigan. These things matter because it matters how you view the law and you view yourself in relation to the law. Um, I, I also just wanna bring up quickly that the parking lot out here, the auxiliary parking lot was used, uh, during, uh, Menomora Country Days as part of the event. And that's not lit properly. I drive by it every morning at six A M. It's dark. It's not lit properly. So is the township following its own standards? Something to definitely look into. But also in relation to Menomora Days, you know, Tom, your dad's been branding on you that you're the president of the Lions now.
Progress.
Thank you. That was inappropriate during my comment. But this was, uh, Friday morning in front of the lines. This was how the fire hydrant was blocked off, using a rebar, things that can impale people. You know, when you have a sidewalk right here and people are walking by it, you've got people who are on steady on their feet. They might have a disability. You might have kids who push each other around something I see every single day. Um, that's a very, there are eight thousand safe ways to do this and you pick the really bad one. Okay? But then on Fri- uh, Friday night, it was completely parked up, completely parked up. This, uh, hydrant was completely obstructed in front of the lines. And then there were numerous other things at that event that were just completely unsafe. And some of them were on the village property, but some were right next to the lines. Again, the, the entrance to this, using steel fencing rods that people can impale themselves on, it's just, it's not A D A compliant at all. And it's just a really bad idea in any situation. So, you know, again, you take on this huge responsibility here. Uh, let's do some learning. Let's think about this township's pledge for transparency and for integrity. Because there are a lot of issues with that here. Thank you.
Okay, uh. Anyone else in public time?
Anyone else?
Anyone else in public time?
You want me up at the podium or here?
You can speak from there.
Right, we got Bill Holden, Menomora Township and Village. I just wanted to say, I do personally appreciate what the board does. Are any of us perfect? Nope, not at all. But to take the time to do what the board does and review the things you do do, no, we do. But I do appreciate what everybody is doing. And I personally really appreciate living where I live. And I enjoy when people are having a good time and nobody's getting hurt. And let's really take into consideration what happened today in this great country, which is Texas. That's all I have to say. Thank you guys for doing the job that you do.
Hey, now, before we get, uh, I know we're gonna review a sign for a minute. Uh, you wanna? I don't know exactly what this is about.
Let's do that second.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Best one you ever reviewed, uh.
Sure.
May hardly look. Pretty easy.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we've got a sign permit and grant you all for decision tonight. Maybe the last sign permit that we'll review as a planning commission, depending on, um, how far we get on the sign ordinance. Um, so this is a permit request for four zero five three South LaPierre Road, which is the current site of, it's called Menomora Square. I'm sure we're all familiar with it, off item twenty-four there. And the proposal in this sign, uh, permit request is just to replace the existing sign cabinet. So there's a great image that's in there from the applicant in your packets tonight. Um, the existing supports will stay. The plan is to kind of just take down everything in the center and then kind of reword how the tenant space sizes. So you can see on the left there on the existing sign, some of those tenant space signs look to be a little not uniform. And now with these, you can see clearly in the spaces where it says tenant aren't included. It would be very uniform for each, uh, tenant space at Menomora Square. And then obviously the big, the big part on top of that sign is gonna be an L E D sign, but we're told that it's a static, static sign. So that tells me maybe two images, maybe three, but no sort of flashing and quick changing, um, images on that top piece. Um, since this is an existing location, um, and existing supports, you know, there wasn't really much to check in our sign permit review. Um, so all aspects of our sign permit review, all ordinance requirements that relate to new signs, um, were satisfied in this first submission. So, yeah, like I said, easy review, the footprint stays the same and everything's been satisfied. If you have any answer or any other questions, if you all have any.
It, it tidies it up quite a bit.
I think it was nicer.
Yeah. It's not as confusing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's the same height, so it looks like it could be taller, but these, this left to right showing the existing and the proposed, um, you can see that there's a twenty, it's a little bit hidden on the left side of the page.
Right.
But there's a twenty-foot tall space, uh, dimension. And then that same dimension is on the right side with the proposed sign too, so the height is not changing.
Pretty straightforward, gee.
Yeah.
You tell the requirements.
Yes.
One thing to note for the P C members, the building code requires the address be posted on a sign. So the existing sign has the address at the dot. And the new sign doesn't have an address. So the address will have to be on there somewhere, whether they put it on the face of the pole or they incorporate part of the address on the sign, which would be more preferred because if you catch it north and southbound in Anderson for any delivery driver, inspector, servicemen, they're huge when you're driving by to see them, so.
The others placed with the other Menomora Square.
Yes.
For the others.
Or even at the bottom part of the sign.
No.
No?
Because when you're driving along, you wanna see it.
What about two heights?
Yeah.
Twenty-four? You don't.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, the.
I know, uh, twenty.
Twenty.
No, yeah.
Fifteen, just the.
I, I was.
Twenty.
I think I have.
Which is one.
Ten.
Twenty-five is the height. Is our maximum height. This sign is supposed to point.
So then it was about fifteen?
I bet if we ask, they'll keep the old sign, the old address, sign them, they'll put it right on top of the new sign.
Okay.
So do you make a motion with that?
I'll make a motion to approve the sign permit for four zero five three South LaPierre Road with one condition, that the sign includes the street address of four zero five three on the sign.
Support.
I guess we just could do a roll call on that too.
And Ian, you supported it?
Yes.
Roll call vote. Dan Miller.
Yes.
Tom Wise.
Yes.
Andrew Darian.
Yes.
Phil Bellinger.
Yes.
Nick Holden.
Yes.
Lance School.
Yes.
And George Nash.
Yes.
Okay. Now, get into the.
Signage.
Signage. Yeah, what, what is this?
Okay. You wanna start?
It's an old sign.
Okay, I'll start, yeah. So I had, uh, our planner, Ben Keller, y'all, look at that. I took this picture when we started doing the sign ordinances and that. And I wanted to make sure that when we get ready to approve the, uh, changes that we've made, which, I mean, it's taken us eighteen months, but there's a lot of work that went on on that.
Yes.
And I appreciate you guys' effort today. But we need to do something for maintenance of signs. And so we heard earlier today by public comment to lead by example, and this is gonna lead right into it. Now, as far as maintenance on it, I think the P C should have something to say about this sign and what the new sign is and who's gonna write the violation or who's gonna follow up on maintenance of signs, whether that's me or Ben or please, somebody.
Whoever takes.
Whoever.
Yeah.
And then that way, uh, we can get it to the board to appropriate the funding. But I think it's wise to this community and appropriate that we do something and we lead by the example.
Yes.
So does anybody on the planning commission know if it says anywhere in our ordinance on the maintenance of the signs?
And where does the sign vote be?
Just a good point. Know where, uh, you know where the, uh, Cascadian Inn is?
Yeah.
Yep, it's buried right in there.
Yeah, as I was driving up the other day, I was.
Just, just.
That should be.
It's just right.
Yeah.
It's right in the same front yard in the sign we just approved at four zero five three, so. Yeah. Looks like a prop couple of teeth holes.
Yep. We're actually getting a new one for that. Really? Supposed to be this week or next week.
Aren't there a few other ones too?
Just that one right now, line twenty-four, but a lot, a bunch of the ones in the.
Who's, uh, I see on this one, it looks like it was at the time donated by the Chamber of Commerce. Who's the new one's coming from?
The D, D D A.
D D A.
You know, the township gives the D D A money over here.
Right.
And so Dave Bass is obviously on the D D A.
Yeah.
So in talking, Dave, we were, there was talks of replacing the ones coming into the village and squeezing all those up because they all need this. And then, uh, Dave brought up leading by example of Joseph, being the township supervisor, how, uh, this side was in diarrhea.
This week here.
Yeah. Diarrhea's worked, so we, uh, included that in our quote. Like, it's supposed to be, like I said, done either, uh, uh, I think by Friday or, uh, next week to work at all. Is it the exact same? Same footprint? Um, it'll actually match the, uh, the new one that's out here, like the white, the blue and the. That, it'll be that same look, but just same exact footprint as the sign right now. But not a, I believe this one's like a, uh, wood, you know, that was like painted on there or whatever it is. And now it's all gonna be composite. Um, supposed to be no maintenance, you know, in theory.
That's great.
So.
Yeah, thank you very much, Nick.
I'm happy with that.
It's good to see you, young people involved in this.
Over eighteen months ago, this is all the work that I did behind the scenes, trying to make, make this happen.
Good.
And I will say, Dave Bass spearheaded this by saying that as a township supervisor, that we need to replace this.
Right.
Yeah, he's been doing a good job here for twenty-five years now.
I know. Longer than they're on.
Okay. Now, right on to our tech amendment, the sign ordinance. Take a review of all that I, I like the condensed.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Some of the.
Right, so it's a little bit shorter now. So now I think this is the first time we've met as a group and looked at it, um, in this format where we can see the strike through changes. So we, this was a version that I started with our old language and then input all of our new language into it, but then tracked all of the changes that were made, that we made together. Uh, so you'll see lots of strike through and then lots of the new text in red. So that's kind of how this format flows, is anything that we removed is shown in strike through. And then anything that we've added on is now shown in that track changes. So now when asked, you know, where did this regulation go? We have a very clear record of what happened to it. So obviously we've got, as we're flipping through the pages there, on page seven, we've got our new table, permanent sign table. And then we've got some footnotes to that. And then on pages twelve through seventeen, you'll see all of the language that we've not done away with, but we've just moved it, most of it has just been moved into the table. So, and now after each standard that's struck through there, you can see that there's a message that says deleted that says deleted, and then what happened to it. So, some of them were repetitive, like that first one on page twelve, that was just repeating the corner clearance standard, and was frankly just taking up space, so we don't really need to have that standard there. Um, and then a lot of standards were moved to the sign table, some of them we decided to just go away with because they were unnecessary. Um, but now we've got a very clean and cohesive sign chapter that I think is much easier to understand.
Awesome.
In here, we've also got no more planning commission reviews of sign permits, like we've talked about, so those sign permits will just be reviewed administratively by myself, or somebody else at row, and by Joe, or someone else in Joe's position, um, and that's very standard for other communities that I've worked with before. Yeah. So, the two, two minor things that I just wanna draw our attention to, that I think we kinda left hanging, were wall sign area, and then sign height in A-one and A-two for pole and monument signs. So, for wall sign area, I know that we discussed, um, a maximum size of one-twenty at a previous meeting. Um, that's how I, on the table, the permanent sign regulation table, if you flip to page eight, you'll see that right now I've got it in there at one-twenty, um, and I think that that's a, I think that's my recommendation, is that we should go with that one-twenty. And then for the A-one and A-two districts, and for, uh, pole sign and monument signs, as you can see here, we don't allow much, we're very restrictive in A-one and A-two for signage. Um, I recommend that we just leave the height as is. So, formerly, in the old sign section, we had it set at six feet. I think we might've had some discussion early on about taking it to eight, and then we've gone back, and we've kinda back at six. I think we just leave it at six. Um...
Quick question.
Not very tall.
Yeah.
About, what are you gonna add in? We must have the address on the sign.
That needs to be in here. That's new to me, and luckily, we've got, it's in the building code, so if it wasn't caught in the zoning review, then it would be caught in Joe's review doing building, but it's better to have it all set, um, right at the start.
Number seven is in there, Mr. Israel. All signs shall be maintained in a condition similar to that which existed at the time of their direction. We gotta give them a heat block, because that, you're a crap, that's exactly where it is.
Well, I agree with that. We should add a standard in here that talks about that the address is required, kind of, we just cite the building code, per the Michigan Building Code, this is required on all signs. Um, other than that, I'm really happy with how this works. I've been using this as a, I'll read a little bit, I've been using this as an example for other communities that are asking for sign ordinance work, um, because I'm really happy with what we did here. We took an old, out-of-date ordinance, and we didn't necessarily rewrite it, but we just kinda reformatted it, and, um, I like what we have here. So, the next step tonight would be for us to set a public hearing at our next planning commission meeting. We will already be meeting in October, as I'll talk to you at the very end of our agenda. We've got two site plans we're gonna look at in October, um, so I think that that would be a good meeting to have, hold this public hearing again.
When is the date?
Oh, I don't think so. I, I hope that this'll be quick for the sign, you know, depending on what we hear from the public, because we've worked so much on this, we don't have any more questions, right? And that was the goal, for us to wait for a public hearing, is that we wanted to, um, have a draft such as this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, set a public hearing for October, uh, I'm looking, um, it looks like it's the fourth, oops, the wrong year. That's the right year, October eighth. With the O-N-S Day at seven o'clock. Oh, two, 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 set.
Consider, yeah, we set a public hearing to consider tax amendments for some, yeah.
Do you have a clean version of this done for that?
So, what I will probably do is, well, we might actually show two versions of it, one, like it shows here, and then one, you can do a thing in Word that basically can simulate, if I accepted all the track changes, what would it look like? So, we'll have two versions, one with all the track changes, and then one clean, as if they were all accepted.
Okay, we still have a motion to...
And so Ian made a motion to set a public hearing for October the eighth to consider text amendments to the sign ordinance.
Second. Ian, you should second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay. I guess you can have her, you can tell us about the upcoming, I don't think we have any of them.
Those two, right.
Anything to do for us?
So, Todd, like I said, next month, we'll have two site plans. One of them is a special land use, and one of them is a site plan called Rolling Hills Stables. It's a very large, nice, commercial, um, horse stable that wants to be cited. I believe it's just south of Best Road on twenty-four. I think it might be this big parcel right here.
Or the old barn, or that old barn, yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, it's a big site plan, there's a lot going on, so we're reviewing it right now. I hope to get a review letter out end of this week or early next. Um, it's a nice print. The one thing that jumps out to me right now is it's not stamped, so just like we did with Best Wedding Venue, that's a big thing for us. It's gotta be stamped. Right, absolutely. Um, so we'll, I'll make sure to emphasize that in our review, and then the second one is, is called the Lodge for Pampered Pets. I believe back in maybe two thousand fifteen, or at some point in time, there was a special land use that was awarded for this use of land, and now they've come back and they wanna do an expansion project on that building.
On, on the building, not in the front, or...
Not the outlot.
Not in the...
Right, not in the outlot, it's on the existing. Yeah.
Because it's got that one piece up front for sale, where it has been.
Exactly.
My, my understanding.
Yeah. So, hopefully straightforward, they're both in, and plenty of time for us to get a good review, review one by the planner, and then they have lots of time to revision, their questions, so hopefully they're pretty buttoned up by next month.
The pampered pets, is any of you been in there?
I have, when they first opened.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's very nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
I don't have pets to put in there, so.
No, I just wanna...
And I didn't wanna review it, and it was...
You can still go look for a shower or a bathroom.
I know, but I'd be all here.
I bet it draws people from out of town, because that's one that, I don't know how many of those there are, you know, in the area, so.
We're not flooded with them, put it that way.
Right. That's all I got, George.
Anybody have anything else?
Yep.
Well, what a motion? I guess we, I don't know.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Should've taken it.
Glad you put all this stuff together, then.
Yeah.
It's nice and lovely. Birds, we had so much birds.
Nice to meet you.
All these two of these.
Nice to meet you. How's it going? Good.